I'd like to call this February work session to order. I'm going to go to the public if anybody has anything to speak about on this side of the room, go to the podium and state your name for the record. Anybody on this side of the room? Not Joe and Bill.
Which Bill? This bill?
Yes. Not right now.
All participation. I just want you to know that I'm in an extreme hurry this evening. I've got a friend of mine who was just rushed in. They're operating on our brain downtown. So, I want to try to get out of here as fast as possible. They can run the meeting.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda to purchase properties on Chestnut Street.
Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? I'd like to just comment that we've been looking at properties on Chestnut Elm Street for years and we were approached by an owner who owns nine properties on Chestnut Street. And at one time, his realtor had sent a letter to the borough and wanted to sell the nine properties for a million dollars. Well, through negotiations, the borough was successful at 3:30 this afternoon and reached an agreement to purchase all nine properties for $400,000. So, it's a big difference from where his realtor was until where this Borough Council was able to negotiate. I want to thank the manager and our solicitor. There'll be a list of properties that all council has. And at this point, by purchasing these nine properties, I think there's only ten owner occupied left in six?
Seven on Chestnut.
Seven on Chestnut. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Well, wait a minute. I have to make the motion for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'd like to make...
We're all in favor of suspending the rules.
Are we? Yes. Okay. Motion to adopt the resolution to purchase the nine properties on Chestnut Street for the total price of $400,000.
Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion closed. All right, Lorraine, what do you have? Regular free agenda.
I just want to thank the chief and the police officers for the great job that they're doing with speeding. And that's all I want to say about that. You know, you know what I'm talking about. And I just want to tell everyone that the majority of the windows that are going in to Mill Run should be in by March. So, very exciting. I just wanted to pass that on and I'm looking forward to the future with that building. Thank you.
I just wanted to just touch base with the chief. I don't want to make a, you know, I'm not asking for any information publicly, let's just put it this way, but I have spoken to the chief before and so has Lorraine about the Harriman Apartments. Just want to keep those on our radar. Some neighbors have asked questions about some of the activity there. So, you know, at some point, if we could get a private update on that, that'd be great and we can convey it, anything that's appropriate to convey to the neighbors about that. And I too just want to commend the chief and the police in general for their presence lately. It's just, you know, over the last couple of months, just still a noticeable uptick in just presence, which is great. And then also, I would like to say that I don't want to speak for Mrs. Cullen, but I know in our conversations, we both agree with this.
You can speak for me.
Thank you.
It's okay.
That north, the project on Ratcliffe Street, we keep a very close eye on it, on the north part of Ratcliffe Street. And, you know, we're not happy with where it is right now, but we are doing everything in our power, as is this council, to push it along, working with the redevelopment authority and just trying to get the developers to get moving on that. And if they're not going to get moving on that, to turn the page and turn it over to another developer. So, you know, we are, it is on our radar and we're working as hard as we can and doing whatever we possibly can. We would like to stress as well, though, that it is a private entity. There's not, there are limits to what we can do. So, right now, we're just keeping that on our...
And there is a little rumor out there that may be true. That's all I'm going to say. And it's a good one, so...
And that is all I have.
Okay. Can you go to the next person?
Dave.
Thanks, Ralph. Hey, real quick, Mr. Dillon, I got a couple of calls. People were complaining they didn't get their trash recycling. I told them just to call the borough. Is there anything else they should do to get, sort of get a trash bin?
No, that's, that would be the best, I think.
Okay. And also, real quick, TV sets are in the alleyways. Did we come up with a solution for them yet or besides the borough happening?
In the, the trash pamphlet that was mailed to all the property owners, it explains the process, the procedure, that they can take the television down to the Public Works on Tuesday between certain hours and it can be disposed of there. We have a trailer that then takes them to wherever.
So, Tuesday's the day? Okay, thank you very much.
Tuesdays and Fridays.
Dave, if someone needs help with that, like if someone is elderly and needs help, they should contact us. We would, we would definitely get somebody to help you with those televisions.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Just real quick, I have a few things. First, I want to thank St. Mark's. They had a thank you to the community last week and Dave Gerard, Lorraine, Lorraine was supposed to be there, she got said...
My husband went in my place.
Ralph, the chief, the police chief, the fire police, Harvey was there, Merle was there. We were all there and it was really nice and welcoming and they were thanking us for all our community service. So, I just want to say thank you to St. Mark's for anybody that was there and able to make it. Then I want to add to the agenda that we bring in Shay Klaule next Monday because we're getting ready to start the first Fridays again. So, we need her to come in and explain and go over all the things that we usually do, like closing down the street and preparing for first Fridays, which have been really a success in this town. And it gives the community and the children something to do on first Fridays. And it's totally free. I'd like to thank the chief for responding to a complaint that we had with speeding, especially around the school. Your quick response to that was greatly appreciated by a lot of people in this town and I'd like to thank you personally for that. I also would like to read something here. And I want people to understand when I read this that I am not, I totally understand. Let me read it. I'm sorry. Okay. It was, "That Friday, the headline in Bucks County Courier Times was 'With the Police: Opioid Reversal Drug Saves Lives, But Addiction Crisis Must Be Addressed.' It has been clear for a number of years that the heroin opioid epidemic is devastating our county and our community. I have heard many residents, friends and loved ones who have been impacted one way or another by this epidemic. There is no doubt that Narcan is saving lives. Between 2015 and 2016, Bucks County had at least 191 opioids reversals, the third highest by Pennsylvania law enforcement. Narcan was used 20 times in Bristol Borough. While everyone agrees saving lives with Narcan is very, very good, but we need to address the root of the problem. In the article, Chief Henry stated, 'It's beyond frustrating. I don't see anyone coming up with a game plan in addition and law enforcement strategy.' We owe it to our residents to make sure that they are aware of the resources available in Bucks County. As community leaders, we need to lead the discussion on developing a strategy with Chief Henry. Bucks County District Attorney Matt Weintraub has been speaking to communities throughout the county on this issue. With this in mind, I respectfully request council to invite Bucks County District Attorney Matt Weintraub to Bristol Borough for a community discussion with Bristol Borough residents on the crisis. It will take all of us working together to solve this problem. And thank you for your attention on this matter." I know there's a lot of concern and a lot of people get upset and they say nasty things like, "Well, why bother?" But it's not, you know, who are we to judge or who are we to say? This is a disease. It cannot be controlled. People are out there.
Somebody's child.
And it is somebody's child. So, I think it's great that we invite him and all together we meet and anybody in the community that's interested, come and learn what we need to do to be more proactive.
Betty, mind if I, if I just add one thing to that because I think that's great, what you're requesting and I'm glad that you did it. And I think, you know, we are, we have a tendency with all the great things that are going on here to, to avoid some of these issues. And I don't think, I think it's important for people to understand, this is not a Bristol problem. You know, you, you look around and you see that there are people that are struggling and when you're in your local community, you think, "Wow, what's going on in my local community?" But if you read and you're really examining what's going on nationwide, I mean, this is an epidemic and anything that we can do on a local level to address it, I think is great. So, I, I want to applaud you for taking the initiative on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I look forward to getting together with everyone so we can work on this problem and this issue.
So, Chief, I'll draft a letter to the district attorney's office and sign it and have the, you follow up on it along with the manager and see if we can get Matt here in March or April to host a event for the borough residents who want to come and speak and learn more about it and see...
I'm sure he'll be more than willing to do that.
Maybe we could, you know...
Yeah, there's a lot of communities doing it. I know Lower Bucks recently had like a class on Narcan. I believe you and Merle were speaking about this the other day. And, you know, it's fine, but we need to open our doors and make sure that everybody understands we're here to help you as well. So, I'm really looking forward to this.
Got it.
That's it, babe.
I just have a couple of quick things. One, I spoke to the chief about starting the DARE program again. He has assured this council that it will not cost this $1 of overtime. It'll be done during the shift of the officer that is doing the DARE program. The only cost this council will have is $1,500 for supplies and stuff for their program, which we're going to have to vote on tonight. There's going to be a couple, two more things we've got to vote on tonight. So, one is to allow the chief to spend $1,500 for equipment. The other thing you'll see on the agenda is the chief wants to appoint Matthew Allen as a part-time police officer. Why don't you give us a little history on why this is going to work for the borough?
Oh, see, excuse me, Council President. Matt is a sheriff's officer in Bucks County at this particular moment. He is already trained, already equipped. He knows the residents of Bristol Borough. He executes warrants in the area. So, we're not looking at this point to really, unfortunately, start with a rookie patrolman and bring them up to a level. So, what we want to do is we're looking for more experienced officers that are pretty much plug and play for us. So, that's what we're looking at for these candidates.
Very good, Dave.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing is, Chief, I attended, when I don't go to Sunday Mass, I go to Saturday night Mass at St. Mark's. And this has been an ongoing problem for a while now. It was given to Chief Porter that this time of year, where people crossing, you can't see.
Yeah.
And a lot of these elderly people are crossing Ratcliffe Street at 6 o'clock or quarter after 6:00 or quarter to 6:00 when Mass is over. And we asked the chief last time, and the previous chief, to put a police car out there with their red lights on, to slow traffic down and to help assist if some of these people cross. They cross from the church to the St. Mark's parking lot. And I've seen it for myself the last few weeks, that it's pretty dangerous out there. There was the sign that stops for pedestrians was mangled. Whoever hit it destroyed it. So, I'm asking you, if we could put whoever's on Saturday night to go there and just sit, it takes five or 10 minutes for the church to empty, and put their lights on and just be out there as a presence to slow everybody down. And if they're not there, for them to tell you why they're not there. You know what I mean? I don't want you to just tomorrow say, "Look, guys, I need somebody out there."
I don't have to go any further with it. I'll take care of it.
Okay. I just, I want, I don't want somebody to get hurt.
That's why we...
So, I just want you to know, something has to get done.
All right. So...
Whatever you need to do, do.
Okay. Do you want to suspend the rules?
I want to establish a committee about these boat docks that's going to oversee the docks for years to come. And I want to set up a committee that's also going to be involved with an endowment where I talked to Gene Williams from the Grundy Foundation and very interested in making sure that there's an endowment that's going to continue, you know, maintaining this property for the next 20, 30 years because we're not going to be here. So, I'd like to form a committee. We got to, there's a lot that has to get done before it opens.
Okay.
You know, what time we going to open, what time we going to close, how we're going to, there's a lot of logistics that need to be worked out. So, a couple of council members, I'm sure Tony and Betty's going to want to be involved.
Yeah.
It's their word.
Definitely.
And we'll get some private citizens throughout town. So, if anybody's interested at home or if you guys are rating anything, please contact the borough. You can email jim@jdillon@bristolborough.com or call the borough, give your name and address and we'll be contacting people that we feel that should be on this committee.
Mr. President, what's the timeline on the docks insofar...
They're saying the end of April. I mean, there's, things are going good.
And just, something we threw out there before, I'd just like to throw it out there again, is just a plan for a celebration of when it opens, you know, as opposed to just, I don't mean just a ribbon cutting. I mean, you know, let's think about something we can do.
Oh, we will.
Last a couple of months, maybe even for the summer or whatever. It's my idea. Sorry, Mr. Dillon.
Pretty working with people from the historic board for Bristol Day to bring a tall ship in. So, there's a lot of things going on right now.
Yeah.
All right. Chief, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, let's just run through this agenda, maybe another five minutes. Mr. Pezza and Mr. Ventreska can go through what they have to go with.
Do you want to do the motions?
Well, we got to suspend the rules for a few things. You want to discuss it? Okay. You're going to discuss this page. All right, you go. Whatever you want.
The item three, the idea, I wanted to have this discussion during our budget process. For the last two years, we've been spending up to $7,000 worth of dirt for the infills with the transportation costs. And this is a piece of equipment whereby we can cut down on the purchase of dirt dramatically and I feel it will pay for itself within two years. Now's the time to get it, purchase it and get it delivered within four weeks. So, we have it for this coming year. Otherwise, we've got to start ordering more dirt. And by ordering more dirt in time, we're going to have to bring in and go out and regrade the whole syst, all the fields like we did a couple of years ago. The cost is about $30,000 just on the regrading also. It's recommended that council authorize the purchase of this piece of equipment under the Co-Stars and it would be purchased from the capital improvement fund.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on this?
No.
So, agenda items right now is number two.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Okay.
Number two. Three. Number one for DARE, $1,500.
And what Betty brought up, right?
Well, we're going to send a letter.
Suspend the letter.
Okay. Send a letter.
All right. So, we need to suspend the rules again.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules to add the appointment of Matthew Allen as a part-time police officer.
Can we do them all at once, by suspend the rules?
I'd like...
Or do one each one?
No, suspend the rules to add...
And I'd like to add the DARE program for, we want to, $1,500 to the DARE program. And I'd like to suspend the rules to consider authorized purchase of field equipment per Co-Stars, $13,287.87.
Right, by Mr. Pezza. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, I do one at a time. Whoever's doing it.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to give the DARE program $1,500. My motion.
Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments?
Now, just so people don't ask, it's definitely for equipment and it's well, you know, it's definitely well needed.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Matthew Allen as a part-time police officer.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? Chief?
Can I just make one comment? That's just pending completion of background investigation and medical physical...
Thank you.
This feels another cost-saving effort to the borough.
Going in this...
Going this direction.
Yeah, absolutely. More trained officers instead of...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of field equipment, maintenance equipment for $13,287.87.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, we're done with all borough business?
Yes.
Just want to say something about the Grundy Arena if I can. Friday, Saturday and Sunday, the 10th, the 11th and the 12th, they're doing a deal, two for $14. Two people, couple can go skating any of those nights and it's only a dollar per couple, per skate, for skates, to rent skates. So, I think it's a great deal. The 10th, the 11th and the 12th of February.
I can't beat that date.
Jim, do you have anything?
Somebody should ask me. Maybe I'll go.
Billy, do you have anything?
No.
Either guy, first, I'm waiting, soon as I get a text, I'm leaving. So, whoever, Joe, you want to go? Billy, you want him to go?
Yeah. We need to go.
Ralph, the person you're talking about is a classmate of mine, so please convey to her family her prayers and best wishes for...
Talked about it today and I got a call tonight. They rushed her in to relieve the pressure on her brain, but things aren't going good.
Okay. It's crunch time. We've been at this, we've been at this roting of our attempt to win the Small Business Revolution contest since November and we're really starting to peak at the right time. There's excitement everywhere in town. Just by example, yesterday, I posted a video on what people need to do in order to line up votes. I posted it on Facebook as of just now. When I left the house, it had 1,800 views. Just now, it had 2,000 views. I don't know how that happens. It is people sharing. When people share things on Facebook, Facebook, when they're willing to send it to all their friends, it means they're excited and they're interested. That's how you get that. And we need that exponential, exponential involvement. I want to just take a second to thank, there are, it's risky whenever you thank anyone because there's so many people working on this and it's growing every day. I have to thank my wife Karen, who has, who started this early, back in early December in sub-freezing weather to put signs on all the businesses on Mill Street. She's run the initial reception. She's running the party this coming Thursday night. She sold tickets. She's, she's, I guess she decided if my husband's crazy, I might as well be crazy too if she's gotten into this. We appreciate it.
That's all.
Craig, Craig Whitaker. You know, I've known Craig socially for decades and you'd really never get to know a person until you work with him. And Craig has been exceptional. He's been, he's doing a terrific job. He's in Middletown, I asked him to go to Middletown tonight to speak to the Middletown supervisors about helping us. So, Craig's, and Justin Saxton with all of our computer stuff. Harry Crowe just calls every day and says, "What can I do next? What can I do next?" Ron Walker, who does 1,000 things for this town behind the scenes. And Carl White, who's our tech guy, he designed all of our graphics and things like that. They all donate their time and it's just great. And I don't want to be, I don't want to be Joe Namath 1967 and guaranteeing a victory, but I'm telling you that by every empirical indication, we, if we don't get picked Thursday for these finals, I might have to fly to Minnesota. Because it's just, when, when, when they were measuring things, we got, I'm telling this to the public because I want them to know, we have a real shot to win. When they were measuring things, the number of people visiting the sites, Bristol Borough had twice as many measurements as any, as the next closest town. Twice as many. And they have to weigh that. Of course, they love the town when they came here and I'm sure they loved all the towns they went to. All the towns are great. All the towns have the same needs that we have. That's why they made it to the final eight. But we demonstrated something. We have a shot to be picked. We will, I think, I really think we will be picked. Now, here's what we have to do. And here's what, the question that's been bugging us from the beginning is, "Well, shouldn't we wait till we're picked in order to start lining up votes?" The answer is emphatically, no. We vote for seven days. The team that won last year, the town that won last year got 100,000 votes. We need 17,000 votes a day. If we waste a day waiting to find out if we're in the finals, we don't win. So, we have to line up our votes now. It's a two-pronged thing. We tell people now, we have a very good expectations that we're going to be in the finals and that you need to be ready to start voting on Thursday. Because the day we find out if we're in is the same day voting starts. You do that and then on Thursday, and you say, "We're in, start voting." That's the way it has to be done. Okay? Now, before we scare people and say, "Well, how are we going to get 17,000 votes?", let's remember that you can vote once a day, every day, from every computer, every, every Internet access, computer, iPhone, whatever that you have. And you could also vote by every browser you have. So, it's not an email thing. Okay? So, if you have three brow, if you have Internet Explorer and Firefox and Google Chrome, you can vote three times on one device and you can vote three times on your other device. So, those votes add up. But even more important than that, we can't win this election just in Bristol. If the Bristol people don't come out and they're going, come out, that's, if the Bristol people don't vote, we don't have a shot. But they're going to vote. They're excited.
The people are going to vote.
They are excited. But what we need to do is garner votes from all over the county, from all, from all of our social networks. Your relatives, your friends, your coworkers, your college fraternity brothers, sorority, whatever. That's what we're doing. The president of Bucks County Community College sent a letter to every staff member at the college. And there are, there are literally a couple thousand because they have a lot of adjuncts. St. Mary's Hospital, we have, we have Sue Montes working on St. Mary's Hospital. The president of Lower Bucks Hospital just did, just did a video for us, okay? Every organization we can think of...
Simon &amp; Schuster.
Simon &amp; Schuster. I went to the county last, last Wednesday, I guess it was, the county commissioners issued a proclamation in our honor, naming February 1st, I forget what they called it, but it was basically, "Let's Help Bristol Borough Win Day." And they are reaching out to their employees. Middletown Township, Falls Township, Tully Town, Humveeville, Morrisville, we reached out to all of those municipalities and said, "Help us." And they said, "Okay, we will." They're using their social network. I was just told that Ben Salem already pushed out. "Let's vote for Bristol Borough on their social network." Okay? And the pitch is, there's no other town in the running in Pennsylvania, New Jersey or Delaware. So, anybody that helps us, it's not like they're hurting in another town, it's not like they're slighting another town. So, the message is, if Bristol Borough wins, all of Bucks County wins. Because it's not just the $500,000. What's more important to me, actually, is the eight-part video series. Bristol will be the sole subject of an eight-part video series and the notoriety that will bring for our town, I don't think you can put a dollar value on it. What that's going to do to Joe Ventreska when he's trying to market his restaurant and his condos, you can't put a dollar value on that. So, that's important. So, what we need to do is contact, right now, everyone we can to tell them to go to small, to small, to be prepared to go to smallbusinessrevolution.org. Smallbusinessrevolution.org. When I'm finished speaking, I'm going to ask Lorraine or somebody to hand these out. We already printed 3,000 of them. I just printed another 3,000 today. They tell you everything you need to know. It tells you how many times you can vote. It tells you where you vote, and tells you when you vote. We need to reach out in advance, get them all set, and then, you know, I know...
Have to show them mine, too.
Carry them in your pocket, and get rid of them, and tell people, "Put in your wallet so you can pull it out when it's time." And then we're going to poke them again on February 9th. Thursday night, we're having a party at De Moos. It's sold out. And I warned people on Facebook many times, "Get your ticket, because it's going to be sold out." It's sold out. But I want to, we're calling that party a "we've already won" party. If by some unbelievable chance, we're not picked for the finals...
Don't say it. We're winning.
Right. We've already won.
Yes, we have.
And that's our, that's our, that's our, that's our message. This has, this town has come together. I was taking a walk today with Karen, and somebody stopped me and said, she, "I just never, I've never seen anything like this. I've never seen people on social media getting together like this, and I haven't either." So, we're excited. Now, what questions can I answer for you? What questions are you getting, maybe, that, and look, you know, you've, you're here because you won an election. You know how to win elections.
We've got to win another one in May.
Let me, let me ask you...
You know, you know how to win elections.
Right, Dave?
So, what you need to do...
Dave said shit.
I have a question.
What I'm asking you to do, and then I'll get, what I'm asking you to do, is that same network of people that you reach out to, to get yourself here, reach out to them again, and ask them to make this happen.
So, I just want to, I'm waiting for somebody to pick me up at the front.
Sure.
But I just want to say, all kidding aside, that you have went beyond anybody's expectations. And if we win, it's your devotion that you have put into this, and I really commend you on that.
And your wife...
But I'm glad you mentioned Craig, because Craig Whitaker has been by your side from day one.
Yep.
And there's a guy that never was involved, that he lived in Bristol his whole life. He bought, built a home here, and made his roots here, and it shows you how much people realize what's going on in this town. And it's really nice to see a guy like him step up and do everything that you needed. You got Shirley, you got so many good people right now involved.
Yes, Shirley Bree.
But you have really quarterbacked this, and I hope you bring it to, you know, into the bank.
And thanks to you, everybody's excited. Everybody's excited.
Yeah.
We're already winners.
Well, I, I feel like everyone loves Bristol that lives here. We, we do. But now, we're getting to show that. And, I mean, it's so exciting for all of us. I mean, you kids are from the high school, right?
Yeah.
And are you in Mr. Lolly's class?
Yes.
And you will be voting from, from, from school, won't you? Okay. And I see you, you're sitting there smiling, and I know you feel this. This is a great community. And, and what I did was, I called my dad in California, called my cousin in Delaware, I called my other cousin in Pittsburgh, and I told them to do. So, if you have cousins or family somewhere, call them. Tell them to have the people at their work vote for this town.
You know, I'm glad you said that because I said it's risky to name people that are working. There's so many people working. But Pat Mohern has done a great job reaching out to the school district. So, we expect every one of you, every one of you to be voting every day, from all those devices you're not allowed to take out during class.
Take them out.
That, those days...
Tell them that Borough County told you that you had to take them out.
I want to say something about what Ralph said with Craig and everyone that I just mentioned. Our philosophy has been that there are people out there that want to do good things. They just want to do what they enjoy doing, and they need the right project, and they need to be connected, they need to be empowered. So, in this case, we, Craig found something he really liked, and he's running with it very well. But there, there are a lot of people out there that want to do good things, and we welcome, there's no membership in raising the bar, there's no card, there's no dues. You just show up and do something, and the more you do, the more you are recognized. So, I want, that message is to everybody out there. And, and in conjunction with that, don't ask us, don't say, "Hey, I have an idea about what I can do to help us win." Just do it. Just do it. I might contact, just do it. Because we're at the point now that that's all we have time to do. So, that's it. Thursday night, we find out, we start voting Thursday, and it ends on the 16th. Then we find out, we find out on February 22nd, and then when we win, they send a crew here, and it's, it's pretty involving.
Thank you for all your commitment.
If I could just add something as well. Even though it is, it is blood, obviously, this is my father, for those of you that don't know. But, that being said, my, my, just, just as you see the energy that comes along with it, it's not just energy when you say, "We've already won." Seeing the work that my father and mother put in, my only complaint is that we lost the babysitter. But aside from that, all the work that they put in, my wife has committed to opening up a business on Mill Street, and we're really excited by it. But we wouldn't just do it for the sake of just having some fun and because we're excited. We're really feeling the energy and feeling like it's a smart business decision at this point as well. And, you know, a lot of that "we've already won" energy, I think, comes from that idea that people are really starting to realize what this town's all about. We've never seen this energy, I don't think, since, since I grew up here. And it's in no small part, of course, due to you, Dad, and raising the bar, and it's just a really exciting time. And I think, you know, as elected officials, I think what, what these last few years have showed us is that we get elected, and we kind of do some of the, the not-so-fun, dirty work of the day-to-day operation. But nothing is going to be successful unless you have a public and private relationship of volunteers and elected officials working together. So, this is a really exciting time, and I think we're going to win.
Do it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, and, you know, we'll never have these days back. If we squander the next two or three days, and then that following week, we'll never get them back. So, you've got to bring your A-game now.
If we need to go on TV, you could always come here and meet with Matt and do something, just an interview and just blast the TV channel.
Well, you know, on that point, they, they really want you to be anxious about it. So, they're going to let us know how we're doing the first couple of days, and then they're not going to let us know until the middle of the week, and then they're going to let us know with about two days left, and then they go dark. You don't know how you're doing. Because they want you to go crazy getting the votes out. And we're going to do that. We're going to go crazy getting the votes out. So, yeah, you're right. During the week, we'll be poking people against you. Don't get lazy now. Don't vote, don't vote on, on Thursday and Friday and say, "Well, I did it." You need to do it every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
General, I'm sorry. Do you want me to do an introduction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. So, almost two years ago, Mr. Ventreska submitted a pretty ambitious subdivision land development plan for the, what we know as the Stocks Property, now the Ventreska Property. And he was approved by this council for five townhouses, five condos, and a restaurant. Well, I guess that wasn't going to be enough for Mr. Ventreska. As we all know, he purchased the, the property adjacent, the old Majors' property, and has submitted a land development plan for that. He appeared before the zoning hearing board to get some variances last year, appeared before the Borough Planning Commission, the County Planning Commission reviewed it, and also appeared before Harv last week, and has received recommendations and approvals. The Majors' building, which currently houses or did house, I don't know, is it still in there?
No, no, they've been out.
Okay. There were offices on the first floor and four apartments on the second floor.
There used to be four apartments, so it'd be two condos.
But there were four, right?
There were four apartments.
Right. So, Mr. Ventreska came in to ask for approval to convert the four apartments to two additional condos, and to use the first floor of the building as an expansion of his restaurant with an outdoor deck. And now, those two buildings are, under the plan are going to be connected by a, is it a glass?
Connector.
Connector. So, now that the restaurant's going to be over 6,000 square feet?
9,000.
9,000, right. With an outdoor deck, right?
Yeah. Two decks.
So, so far, Mr. Ventreska's received all the approvals and recommendations. There are some ideas still outstanding for the engineers. And, so we invited Mr. Ventreska and his architect here tonight. We also have Amanda Fuller from Gilmore, from our engineer's firm, to answer questions. And really, we just asked them to come tonight to see if council has any questions, because hopefully, this will be on the agenda for next Monday, and Mr. Ventreska can get approval, and he can really start finishing up there. As people can see, he's almost finished the, the one side, and he could start working on the other side. So, I guess, if any councilman have any questions for Mr. Ventreska or Mr. Havers, right?
Just, just curiosity, I was reading over the plan, and I saw the two condos, and I, I couldn't decipher whether the footprint is the 2,100 square feet, or if it's, I read something about 21, how big are the apartments going to be?
Each unit upstairs would be about 2,100, because the downstairs is a little over 4,000 square feet.
Okay.
And then a basement.
So, it's going to be two 2,100 square foot roughly?
Yes.
Condos?
Yes.
And then that, that addition to the restaurant, are you envisioning that's a huge restaurant? Are you envisioning that like an event space, or like a...
It's three, it's three pieces. It's the, the piece that's the original piece that...
You better go over by that, that microphone.
It's the, I think in here.
Yeah. You got to make sure on TV.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's good? It's the initial, the initial 5,000 square feet that'll face the river?
Yeah.
Will be more nicey, nice sports bar, pub, casual, but night, you know, good food, that kind of thing, with a deck facing the river. And then the connector goes into, the front section is a takeout pizza and beer, you know, in the, like a pizzeria.
Okay.
You know, just easy. And then in the back of the Majors' building is more of an open, can have parties, that could, opens right up to a deck, about a 3,000 square foot deck. So, it'll all connect in the back there.